Welcome, how's everyone doing?
Good, okay. All right, so I'd like to call to order the February 7th Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting, note the presence of all three board members, and I'd like to have Controller Karen Sanchez lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this morning. I just want to first note that the board had an executive session for the county commissioners that was held on Thursday, February 1st, to discuss potential litigation. First, I want to talk a little bit about our governor's budget presentation that he announced yesterday for the 2024-2025 PA budget. I want to thank and applaud the governor for his commitment to advocating for many key programs and priorities that not only impact the residents of Montgomery County, but all residents across the Commonwealth. His proposed budget advocates for more funding directed to higher education, including community colleges, colleges, increased investment in public transit, which would directly benefit all SEPTA riders, strategic investments to enhance economic development in PA, addressing critical housing needs, which would directly fund programs that we administer here, like our homeless, I got distracted here, hi there, homeless assistance program and whole home repairs, adding sixteen million in SNAP benefits, leveraging federal funding for childcare, which is important for working families, and other key investments for protecting our most vulnerable, ensuring access to mental health services, protecting the environment, and so much more. As county commissioner, I will be advocating for protecting our Montgomery County residents and encourage our state delegation to support these items. Next, I want to talk about Black History Month, since we're in February, it's a real opportunity for us to focus our attention on the contributions of African Americans to the United States and here in Montgomery County. Some of those people and places to celebrate include Camp William Penn in Shelton Hand Township, the only training camp during the Civil War for African American soldiers in PA, and the largest in the nation. Abolition Hall in Plymouth Meeting was a hub for anti-slavery speakers and a station on the Underground Railroad. Edward Hector from Conshohocken was a private in the 3rd PA Artillery Continental Line and has become symbolic of the many unknown black soldiers who served in the American Revolution. Dr. Martha Settle Putney, born right here in Narristown, joined the Women's Army Corps in 1943, became a first lieutenant, and eventually commanded a unit of black medical technicians in Chicago. During her service, Martha was credited for helping to establish policies regarding equality for all members of the armed forces. And lastly, James A. Bland, famous composer of "Carry Me Back to Old Virginny" and many other songs, was buried in Ballakin Wood. I also had the great honor, or have the great honor, of being the first black woman elected to the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to visit the White House and sit at the table with about eight other black leaders from across the country to talk about the issues that are plaguing the black community across this country. We talked about issues on gun violence, we talked about affordable housing and homelessness crisis, and ways in which we as Montgomery County can optimize some of the reforms and funding that are coming out of the federal government, not just for our black citizens, but for all residents. And so I'm honored to be the first, and I'd like to also acknowledge other first black leaders in the county. I'd like to acknowledge Tina Lawson is the first black woman to be elected as Register of Wills, and Dr. Janine Darby was the first black woman to be elected as Coroner in Montgomery County. So, we've come a long way over the last forty years since I've been a resident of Montgomery County, and the beauty of Montgomery County is our diversity, and so let's take this moment to acknowledge the contributions that our black friends and neighbors have made for generations to this great county and this great country, but also let's celebrate black history not just in February, but every month throughout the course of the year. So I invite all county employees and residents to join us for our first Black History Month celebration as a part of our Black History Month program, which is today, and it begins at 12:00 PM, and details are on the screen. Next, I want to mention, I have longer comments today, so I apologize in advance, we are excited to announce our annual launch of the Juneteenth Art Contest for school children throughout Montgomery County. This year's theme is for the art and prose of freedom contest is "Hope for a brighter tomorrow." We invite all students in Montgomery County, public, private, parochial, or homeschools to use their creativity to submit art that embodies hope, celebrates freedom, and inspires action for a better future. Students can submit poetry, a short essay, or works of arts, and entries are due April 7th. Winners will receive hundred-dollar gift cards and will be invited to join us at the county's Juneteenth flag raising event. I hope that any parents, art teachers, or English teachers can consider if any of their curricular dovetails with the contest theme, and you can find more information on the county's website forward slash Juneteenth. And lastly, before we move on with our meeting, I want to acknowledge that we've heard from the public about wanting to have more time to discuss county issues. As many have heard, Commissioner DeBello had made a suggestion about incorporating additional opportunities for public comment into our board meetings. Our county staff worked with all three of us individually and proposed a solution that will give the public more time to discuss issues germane to county business while still being efficient in the use of our community's time. Starting today, we will have two opportunities for public comment during the board meeting. The first public comment will be available during the start of the meeting and must pertain to subjects on the agenda for that day's meeting. The second opportunity for public comment will come at the end of the meeting and can pertain to any issues that may come before the Board of Commissioners. These must still be relevant and germane to county business. We'll have two sign-up sheets at the table for those in the room. People on Zoom will raise their hands during each public comment section to be unmuted when it is their time to speak. I just want to point out that this is one example of how this new Board of Commissioners is committed to listening and working with residents of Montgomery County, and I look forward to continuing to find opportunity to collaborate and engage in respectful dialogue. So, I'm really excited. Thank you, Tom, for raising this, and thank you, Neil, for your support. I want to make sure that our Commissioners' Boardroom and our board meetings remain a safe place for people to share ideas, share feedback, and I want to ensure that we create a respectful and healthy environment, and so I'm hopeful that giving these extra minutes will allow you all to be able to do that. And so, sorry for those long-winded comments, but there was a lot to talk about, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Mckeja. Thank you.
Very well done. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I'll start first by recognizing that February is also American Heart Health Month. Heart disease is the leading cause of death for men, women, and people across racial and ethnic groups in the United States, although many are also affected disproportionately. We want to encourage everyone to really seek out one resource, hearthealthysteps.org. It's provided by the CDC. It helps you understand your risk factors, ways that you can take steps to decrease your risk of heart disease. The second announcement I'd like to make is really exciting. So in December of 2023, Governor Shapiro signed into law Pennsylvania's first-ever Indigenous Defense Fund with an allocation of seven point five million. That was the first time in the history of Pennsylvania that the state invested in Indigenous defense. Before that, all of the obligation was met by counties locally, and for those of you know, the work of being a public defender is difficult. The offices are frequently burdened with caseloads per attorney that you wouldn't see anywhere in the private sector, and we truly need that level of support coming from the state, and many other counties need it as well. So, the announcement that we have to make today is something that we're really excited about, which is that the commission that's going to help allocate those funds, which has a number of members appointed by the Supreme Court and the governor, will have our very own Chief Public Defender, Christine Laura, if she can stand up, just so we can recognize her. It's a great honor to have her to serve on this commission with an incredibly important purpose that's going to support hopefully our defenders and those around the Commonwealth. So thank you, Christine, for serving on that on behalf of Montgomery County. For those who don't know, she took on this role last year and is born and raised here in Monco and is from Lansdale, so, thank you. So, a second announcement. Today, we're going to be voting on about half a million dollars in additional funding to the Monco Anti-Hunger Network. This money's going to go to direct purchase of food for county food pantries, and approving these funds really renews our commitment to addressing hunger and food insecurity in the county. It's especially important at a time where inflation and rising prices are going to impact all of our residents, and we need to take steps to help them on the critical issue of food insecurity. So I want to thank everyone who's part of the Monco Anti-Hunger Network and all the food pantries and organizations that are part of that. We look forward to visiting in your locale soon as well. And the final announcement I have is just that this upcoming Saturday, February 10th, is Lunar New Year, so we want to welcome the Year of the Dragon and really wish a happy New Year and celebration to everyone who will be observing. So, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Well, you guys covered all the good stuff.
We did.
Again, I think, just, I want to thank everyone for coming here today. I mean, this is great looking out and seeing so many smiling faces. I've been at Commissioner meetings before, and if there was four or five people or so, that was a lot in some instances, but to see so many people here and be, have interest in what we're doing is really, it's amazing and awesome, and we like it, we really appreciate all of that. It's been a busy month, I can't believe it's been one month since we've been sworn in. It's been busy. As I said, we've been meeting, I know I've been meeting, I know my fellow commissioners have been meeting with a lot of department heads and really trying to get our arms around all the important aspects of what's going on in Montgomery County, because when we're sitting up here, we want to make really good, strong, informed decisions, and to do that, we reach out and getting a lot of information. Even yesterday, I've met with our Commerce Department, I met with our new Steve Forrester and Jenny Butler. Steve is our new Director of Commerce, and Jenny Butler is our Deputy Director of the Commerce Department, and she really focuses on workforce development, which is a good thing, because there's a lot of jobs out there, and she's willing and wants to work extremely hard to get people employed throughout Montgomery County. So there's a lot of programs that they have to offer, there's programs, low-interest loans, just a lot of things that they want to do and work really hard to promote these programs to new businesses and growing businesses. We're, you know, as Commissioners, we already had a special election that we worked through in January, which I think went pretty smooth. We, what's really important is, as Tramell mentioned, Commissioner Weiner mentioned, that as Commissioners are working very well together, and that's a great change, and we're all excited about that. And as mentioned, I made a suggestion a few meetings ago about expanding our public comment. They thought about, they worked with staff and came back and said, you know what, let's try that. My add to what you've mentioned is that this is a good thing from Montgomery County perspective, Montgomery County residents, it's a good thing as Commissioners, but I'm going to put it out there as, not to be a downer, but let's not take advantage and let's not ruin this, because we want to hear what Commissioner, the community has to say, we want to engage with our community, but none of us want to sit up here and just be, you know, chastised or berated for, you know, things that we're trying to do. And I know personally, we have our solicitor down there will do it, and I will do it as well, like I have no problem, you know, saying to someone, no, we're not going there, this isn't appropriate. So let's keep it on the up and up, because I think that we have a great opportunity to demonstrate that this is a good thing for Montgomery County residents, and I'm really excited that we're going to move in that direction. Another big vote that we're going to be talking about later is EMS first responders tax rebate that I think is going to be amazing for Montgomery County, our EMS and first responders. I think it's going to be very well received, and I think many are going to be happy and take advantage of that. So again, these are all the things that we're doing, working together as Commissioners. We got, every week, we get different briefings as Commissioners of things that are going on in the county, and I want to bring that up for two reasons. One is, is that people think that we just randomly vote up here, and they really don't understand the work that staff puts into all of these topics that we go through, so by the time it gets to us and by the time we actually bring it to vote, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of investigation, a lot of questions, a lot of research, so that when it actually makes it to this agenda, we're well-prepared to make the best decisions possible for the county, and I think that's important that we point that out. And finally, I know I get a lot of emails right now through the public email contact, and I'm doing my best to try to get through them. I mean, it's been a fast four weeks, and there's a lot of people that are reaching out, and there are a lot, there's a lot of excitement about the change in Commissioners, and there's a lot of excitement about seeing us working together, and I promise I will get through them all, even if I didn't get, if somebody's watching, I didn't get your email yet, I will, but give me a little bit of time, because we are working through it. So again, you know, I want to thank my fellow Commissioners for the first month of how well and how fun it's been and productive and rewarding, so thank you as well.
Well, I've been here a little over a year, and I'm still getting through my emails, so...
Well, that's not encouraging.
That's why you have the chance, so, all right. Well, thank you for those comments. So I'd like to invite the group that is all about fun up to the podium to give us a presentation on the Valley Forge Tourism Board's annual report. Mike Bowman, you want to come up to the podium with your team?
Thank you, I'd love to have the guest.
Uh?
Monty's here.
And Monty, hi, Monty, how are you?
Good morning, Montgomery County Commissioners, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Sophia, and I'm the Creative Design Associate at Valley Forge Tourism. I have been a Monco resident for most of my life, and I went through the Colonial School District and graduated from Plymouth Way March High School. I then went on to graduate from Cabrini University with a degree in graphic design. Since starting as an intern, the Tourism Board has given me so many opportunities to excel in marketing and get real, hands-on experience. Now that I'm a full-time employee, I appreciate the continued support for my career growth as I encounter new challenges that contribute to my professional development. Thank you again for having us today. I'll now turn things over to our President and CEO, Mike Bowman.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
Thanks, Sophia, and thank you, Commissioners. It's great to be here today, and we're not starting out with COVID, talking about some just wonderful things happening in the county right now. We're here today for the opportunity to get to know you and for you to get to know us. We're a private, membership-based nonprofit that promotes the county, that promotes the county as a destination for sporting events, meetings, convention, and leisure business. We're funded by a 4% hotel tax that we use to drive, visitation, and boost the economy. Here's a quick glance, here's a quick glance at just some of the work we do, and take a look, quick video. Sound? It does sound good, I can guarantee it. It's really a good video. Hey, we're having some technical challenges, are we?
Can do a little dance for us, Mike?
There's a lot going on if you go to county. Monty, you want to do some tricks?
All right, so...
Do you want to come back?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Okay, we'll come right back to it. Right up here on the screen right now is our vision and our mission statement. We do have a five-year strategic plan. We outsource the plan, we update it every three years, we set our goals, our tactics, our objectives, we measure everything, we build everything around the comp set, which is the surrounding counties. So, you're going to hear today about a lot of our goals and goal sets. Some facts, in 2022, visitor spending generated 1.6 billion dollars, which contributed to a total positive economic impact of tourism in Montgomery County of 2.3 billion dollars. And again, that leads the region, it's pretty impressive numbers. Some hotel facts and figures that contribute to those numbers, you're going to hear more about this as the team comes up. We have eighty-two hotels in Montgomery County. We have four new hotels in the pipeline that are becoming in '24 and beginning '25 Q1. We have ninety-four hundred and ninety-six hotel rooms, 266 million dollars in revenue, a record set in 2023 alone. Almost two million room nights came through Montgomery County in 2023. And to give you an idea of rooms, Bucks has 4,500, Chester has 4,100, Delco has 4,300. So, and Philadelphia County has 1,800 rooms. So we had double the amount of rooms for all the suburbs throughout the county. Montgomery County, as we all know, is a big county. So, big wins for the team in '23, 1.7 million, a million website views. Our marketing team is incredible, you're going to hear more from them. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand social media followers. A hundred and forty thousand room nights were booked by our organization alone. Sixteen hundred stories just about Monco came through our office. Twenty-five industry awards in 2023. Looking ahead, this and next year will be great for Monco, but I have to tell you, 2026 is going to be beyond incredible. Between celebrating America 250 and all the other events coming to the region, as you can see, some of the events up here, I'll go through some of them real quick. Valley Forge of Montgomery County PA will be on the global stage, and we're getting ready. We're going to be updating the Commissioners randomly, there is a lot coming our way. So for example, we have, there's March Madness, there's the PGA Championship, which is not in Monco, but we always benefit at a Rod of the Country Club, that'll be eighty thousand people. You're seeing a lot of news right now, World Cup is coming, over six hundred thousand people are going to be coming to this region. This is all really, really, you know, pop in June and July of '26. Major League All-Star Game's coming, Marion's hosted a big event, and then there's going to be events at the Valley Forge National Park, there's a lot of planning going on right now, and certainly things are up the counter. So I'm going to come back up at the end of the presentation, I'm going to turn it to Jake right now, but I will, you know, open it up for some questions. Monco has a lot happening right now.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good seeing you, and I was going to kick things off with a little bit of history about the organization, but first and foremost, I'm Jake Marcusson, Vice President of Operations with the Tourism Board. So, this organization's over sixty years old, founded in 1963. At the time, these organizations are, like ours, were referred as TPAs, Tourism Promotion Agencies, Tourism Promotion Agencies. Now they're referred to as DMOs, Destination Marketing Organizations, it's kind of changed over the years, and over those sixty years, the name has evolved to be what it is now, Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board. Another key date would be, for instance, in 1999, the organization became a private nonprofit, 501(c)(6), but the county does retain fiduciary oversight of the organization by appointing its board members. And then last but not least, enabling legislation through the state of Pennsylvania has allowed organizations like ours, through the help of the county, to enact room taxes. So the first one was in 1983, and subsequently over the years, it's been increased, and most recently in 2016, Governor Wolf signed into law something called Act 18 that allowed counties to increase room tax up to 5%, currently ours is at 4%. Next slide. So how are we measured? And I take great pride in what the organization does on a day-to-day basis to lead the region in these metrics. So, a little bit of background on how we are measured, and this is just one metric. We do a lot of other, you know, type of metrics to measure the organization, but at the end of the day, it comes down to room revenue, total room revenue for the county of Pennsylvania, or County of Montgomery. For instance, we're measured on occupancy, which is amount of rooms filled on any given day, there's the average daily rate, and then you do the math of both of those, and you get something called revenue, a RevPAR, revenue per available room. And what I want to point out, and this is what we're looking at here, is comparison between 2023 versus 2022, year-to-date change. You can see in the bottom right with the red box, Montgomery County outperformed the rest of the suburban counties with growing its overall room revenue close to 7%. So not only did the county come out of COVID strong, we continue to lead the growth in the region when we compare to our comp set, which is other suburban counties. Next slide. So, how do we match up against the other counties? You can see here, as Mike mentioned, the 266 million, that's the total room revenue for the entire county, okay? We grew, like I said, to 7%. In fact, some county, one county in particular, actually decreased year over year, but the other counties did go up a little bit, a little bit, but obviously not as much as our revenue growth. How do we compare to the rest of the counties when you look at our total rooms? As Mike mentioned, we're a little over 9,000, Philadelphia's about 19, the other counties are about half of ours. We control about 42% of the market share, even though we only control about forty, so 41% of the total supply. And then last but not least, at the bottom, is the room tax rates that you can see comparing to the other counties in the region with us at 4%. So that, I feel like that is a competitive advantage for us. Next slide. So, at the end of the day, when it comes down to being a DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, it comes down to funding. With that being said, you know, we turn on the TV every single day, and you see other states marketing, their states, New York State, Virginia, et cetera. Pennsylvania unfortunately does not have a robust marketing campaign to promote itself, so that comes back to the county. So, we're at eighteen, or excuse me, 92% of our total revenue in 2023 came from room tax. However, we are diversified, and I'm happy to say, not long ago, we were at about 98% was funding our revenue was room tax. But you can see, we, between membership dues and co-op advertising, we bring in close to half a million dollars, and we have a very conservative investment income strategy. We also bring in state grants, we lean on the state quite a bit, whether it's helping to fund our arts initiatives, or even our Monco makers, our local breweries, we're going to be doing, we receive grant money from the Pennsylvania Electric Control Board to market our breweries in the county. And then last but not least, you'll hear more about it, but we also put on a run every year at Valley Forge Park, and that is revenue that we then turn back over to the park to enhance. enhance visitor services and visitor profile at the park. So, and that's a great partnership. So with that being said, questions at the end? I'm going to turn it over now to Lisa Carl. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Good morning, everyone. How are you today? So happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Lisa Carl, I'm the Vice President of Sales and Strategic Partnerships. And as you may know, sales works very closely with our hotel partners, helping them to reach that sell-out status in Montgomery County. We're sending them group business opportunities every chance we get. So how do we do that? Next slide, please. So we act as an extension of the hotel sales and marketing efforts by focusing on bringing in group business of all types, from corporate training programs to state association conferences, along with a ton of sporting events. So the strategic sales approach to is that we attend shows to meet folks that are interested in our destination. We invite them in for hotel tours. We visit all the facilities, in particular, the Valley Forge Casino Resort, the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center, as well as the Proving Grounds in Conshohocken are the big ones. So we have five talented full-time sales professionals, and this year they plan to travel over 150,000 miles internationally, nationally, and will be participating in over 50 shows, sales activities, and the such, all to cultivate business opportunities for Montgomery County. And as a result of our sales efforts, we are projecting to produce over 118 million in economic impact, million dollars in economic impact for Montgomery County. We target meeting business, which is about 30% of the group business that we manage, consisting of corporate association, excuse me, corporate association expo, public shows and that. Everything that's non-sports-related falls into that bucket. We encourage event planners to choose our easily accessible location, providing their, excuse me, providing their attendees with many things to see and do throughout Montgomery County. Next slide, please. And then you can kind of click through the next one. So as Mike mentioned. So from Pottstown to Conchie, from Horsham to King of Prussia, we have over 80 hotels within our Montgomery County hotel portfolio. So that's twice as many of our neighboring suburban counties, so our team has to work twice as hard to fill our hotels and put more heads in beds. So we're super excited to see a new hotel is opening this summer in King of Prussia. It is a great location, right across the street from the King of Prussia Mall. It is a conversion of the Best Western in King of Prussia, and it's soon to be 136-room residence in, and it'll also have, right next door, 68-room Best Western Signature, which is their premier brand. So we are excited that there also will be two more hotel openings next year, because we're soon going to be approaching 10,000 hotel rooms in the Montgomery County region. So it's really exciting. We have a lot of hotel rooms to fill. So, next slide, please. So we are going to be ready to welcome those more hotels to Montgomery County, especially since we continue to see significant growth within our sports tourism market segment, which represents over 70% of what we manage within our organization. So what is sports tourism? Well, of course, your traditional lacrosse, soccer, and the such, but there's also some really unique niche type of business out there for sports, such as pickleball, cornhole, and quidditch, which is that Harry Potter game. And it consists of some college and adult, but mostly youth, and it produces business all across Montgomery County. A majority of the tournaments take place at the Proving Ground, which you see here in the right, top right side of the screen, and that's in Conshohocken. And then, of course, the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center in the bottom right in Oaks, Pennsylvania. So last year was our best year ever. We hosted over 100 sporting events, generating close to 100,000 room nights, generating over $70 million in economic impact. And this year, we are expecting things to be even bigger. So in fact, this June, we will host the largest countywide event ever. We will be welcoming 100 YMCAT clubs to Montgomery County. This is a phenomenal five-night stay event. It will bring 6,000 total room nights all across the county and produce $5 million in economic impact. Montgomery County has truly become a sports destination. The organizers, the players, their families, they all want to be in Montgomery County. So we strive to bring more business in relation to sports, and we really are out there as much as you can imagine. We can go to the next slide, and then click through one more time, and we'll have Justine come up and share some marketing updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Justine Garberino, and I'm the Associate Vice President of Marketing at the Tourism Board. Next slide. Our marketing campaigns are created to drive day and overnight visitation to the county. We run multiple campaigns a year. We rely on data and research to understand our audience. Our advertising efforts include a mix of traditional and new media buys, but always with creative messaging showcasing the best experiences here in Monka. Philadelphia is our number-one target market, but we also advertise in key drive markets like New York, Harrisburg, and down to Washington, DC. Some 45 million people live within 200 miles of the Philadelphia region, so that's a whole lot of people and potential visitors that we can target. Next slide. I mentioned how we use data in our marketing. Well, over the last few years, our data has shown that visitors want two things in our destination: budget and family-friendly travel. So last summer, we launched Freak Out in Montgomery County and puts family and affordability at the forefront while showcasing Monka's top attractions. You can go to the next slide, and one more. That's our video from last summer. You'll see that more this year, and I'll be happy to share that with you after this meeting. But this campaign generated positive results in feedback, and we believe it will still resonate well with our audiences this year. So you'll see it again, of course, with some fun new tweaks this summer. We're hoping the consistency and the fact that many consumers may already be familiar with our messaging will contribute to a stronger brand awareness and recognition of Monka. Another factor we're, on the next slide, another factor we're integrating into our marketing campaigns this year is sustainability. We're focused on emphasizing ego-friendly things to do and places to visit in our content. More are expressing an interest in sustainable tourism. And there's a clear link between tourism and other sectors and how we can work together to promote sustainable practices. As a tourism board, we feel we must help protect the environmental and cultural resources of Montgomery County for the long-term benefit of our community. Plus, this also leads to a more authentic and meaningful experience for visitors, which that's what many visitors now crave when they visit a destination. Next slide. The most powerful way we communicate about Montgomery County, though, is through our website, valleyforge.org. This site helps people find events, restaurants, attractions, hotels, and a whole lot more. In 2023, we, the website generated more than 1.7 million page views. That's the highest number of views in four years. Each one of those views is an opportunity for us to educate a visitor about Montgomery County and encourage them to visit, or if they're already here, stay a little bit longer. Our website is ADA compliant, and there's even a translation tool, so it can be read in various languages. And finally, on the next slide, in addition to our website, marketing campaigns and advertising efforts, we have many other initiatives aimed at driving visitation and enhancing visitor experiences here in Monka. I encourage you to review our annual report, which we brought today, or which you can read on our website for more of those programs. Thank you for your support. It means so much to us as a destination and helps us be successful. So I'm going to toss it over to my colleague, Rachel.
All right. Thanks, Justine. Thanks, commissioners. I'm Rachel Riley, VP of Communications and Visitor Experience. So I oversee our PR, our communications, our social media, our government relations, arts and culture, our visitor services, and I swear, I'm the last one to talk. We're almost done. We are beyond lucky to have our Montgomery County tourism information and welcome space right on, as our president-CEO always says, the 50-yard line at Valley Forge National Historical Park, where we can share with visitors how to explore the rest of Monka. We recently renovated this area with new map navigation tools, itinerary building, and technology resources to make exploring our county even easier than ever, especially ahead of the semi-quintcentennial in 2026, when the park will also be celebrating its 50th anniversary. As part of our partnership with the park, we also host the annual Valley Forge Revolutionary Five Mile Run, our beloved Rev Run. It's one of only a few races run entirely in a national park, and proceeds benefit tourism improvement projects right there at the park. To date, we've raised more than $600,000. So far this year, people from more than nine states are participating all along the East Coast, as far away as Michigan and Indiana. So whether you're a runner or a walker, we'd love to see you conquer the valley with us at this family, kid, and dog-friendly event. So definitely check it out, and it's also very scenic. Moving along from spring to summer, in addition to our summer marketing campaign, this year we're expanding our Crave initiative from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Since we learned from the county that there are as many as 4,000 food and beverage operations in Monka, we wanted to give consumers even more time to explore. So we started Crave Monka Month through the pandemic, and it's evolved from deals and discounts to featured menu items to a celebration of food, chefs, towns, locally-owned spots, and dining experiences all along our main streets. Speaking of which, we brought along a special treat today, and Chef, if you want to start handing out. I'm so excited to introduce you to the man who made it. This is our very own, three-time world champion chef, Pyrom Quintana. His restaurants include State &amp; Stable, Sizzle, and JJ Ratigan Brewing Company, which are all in Pottstown. If you haven't tried any of them, you got to get out there. They're fantastic. He's amazing. You really need to check them out. And Chef is going to come up to the podium and say a few words, but he did prepare a little something for the folks up there, for our commissioners, a salad. He's going to tell you a little bit about that, as well as himself and some of his restaurants once he finishes handing those out. Looks delicious. It smells amazing. So those beyond, sorry, but it smells good. And Chef, you want to come over here and just say a few words, please?
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Chef Pyrom from Pottstown, Pennsylvania. I was originally born and raised in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Moved out at a younger age, like 15 years old, to the rural sport area. My kids are all Springfield School graduates, and, you know, over the years, I've worked at familiar restaurants like Lakeside Inn and Limerick. It started off the foundation for the restaurant industry in the county and their area, and which eventually moved me on to like, travel a little bit and compete in the world barbecue competitions and the KCBS, SCA, WFC, which is the World Food Championships. Traveled around the, you know, country, learning ingredients, learning stuff. And when given the opportunity to become a small business owner, restaurateur, I chose Montgomery County, because of course my roots with Springfield School District and everything else, I said, why not bring world-class dining to our area? So doing exactly that with my team, which employs now 52 employees now in Pottstown, with the revitalization that's been happening since 2018 or '19, we've developed, I put a card in front of you, three restaurants, along with other businesses such as axe throwing. You got the Red Horse Border Club, which runs the car shows that run through the Pottstown area and everything like that. So our initiative has basically been to bring world-class dining into our area. So people, you know, why Philadelphia? Why not Montgomery County? Why not Pottstown? So I've been working with that, my team, you know, vigorously. And in front of you, you have the Herb Frisee Salad, which is featured at one of my restaurants, State &amp; Stable, Contemporary American Fine Dining, all 100%, you know, from scratch, made from the restaurant to everything. So basically, whatever you get inside the restaurant, you're not going to get anywhere else, which is unique to all the restaurants that we're building into the community and to the area. So yeah, very briefly, you know, this area has been, it means a lot to me, and especially when you're in a world stage in Dallas, Texas, when they say from Pottstown, Pennsylvania, on that stage, that's where it's at, that's where the reward is. Being from this county really means a lot, and I'm looking forward to a lot of years of putting some restaurants together here and sharing with all of you folks over the next time.
Great. Well, thank you, and congrats to you. And we know how hard it is to run a business, start a business, and then run a successful business. So all the best, you know. Can you bring a restaurant to Narstown?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's talk about that later. I need some other food options. Okay, awesome. Congratulations.
Chef's being very humble, by the way. You got to check out his videos online up here with Live Fire. It's amazing.
You'll make sure we have all that.
Yeah, we will definitely send that to you. So thank you so much, Chef.
Great, thanks for being here, and thanks for the lunch.
And just another fun fact, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I was just saying, thanks for the lunch.
Yeah, of course. Enjoy. You can eat all the coffee, too. Go ahead. Don't wait, it's fresh. So fun fact about Montgomery County, we actually have the second-most breweries out of all PA counties with more than 40. So as Jake was alluding to earlier, you'll see some promotion from us in the fall for our Monka makers, so stay tuned for more. In the arts world, we have started another initiative through COVID Arts Monka Week. But because consumer and business behavior has changed so much, instead of celebrating the arts for just one week in September, we're going to boost our cultural venues with year-long promotion to hopefully drive more foot and web traffic through our brand-new Arts Monka Pass. Working with a company called Van Wango, this mirrors our other two passes, Monka Makers and History, and visitors will be able to check in at more than 30 arts locations all across the county. They can earn points, and then they get swag. We'll also keep supporting local artists to continue to grow the presence of, currently we have six Arts Monka walls throughout the county, so we're going to be looking at hotels, corporate areas, towns, and attractions. We are super excited to announce the return of our third annual Monka Jazz Fest, and you all are the first to officially hear the theme, "Legacy." The idea behind this is to honor the living legacy that is jazz and some of the legendary performers within the genre by having beginner artists work with those who are more renowned, or even having some tribute concerts. With the help of our awesome consultant, Joanna Pascal, she's sitting right here in the audience today, she is a woman in jazz, we're going to continue to build off last year's Women in Jazz theme by empowering female voices, and we'll also be including educational and fundraising components for youth jazz programs in the county. Now, I do apologize about some of the technical issues we were having with the videos. We did send some links. We'll make sure you all get them. Super fun music, very hype. But we brought a backup, live music. So with that, I'd like to bring up a local woman in jazz, Lower Merion native, Olivia Hugard. She's going to share a little bit about herself and her awesome organization called Key of She, and she just might play you a little something.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm very excited to be here. My name is Olivia Hugard, and like Rachel said, I am a Lower Merion native. I went to Merion Elementary School, Ballackinwood Middle School, and finished at Lower Merion High School. I went on to study jazz studies at New York University with a minor in Public Policy and Management, and I just graduated this past spring. And now I am currently based in New York City, but I come back to Philly very frequently and Montgomery County, where my parents live. And during my time at Lower Merion, I actually started an all-girls initiative called Key of She Jazz. And I started it when I was a seventh grader at Ballackinwood Middle School, when I noticed I was one of the only girls in my middle school jazz band. It started as a small, all-girls after-school jazz ensemble, has turned into a full-fledged nonprofit organization that is based here in Montgomery County. We actually have an event coming up next week called the Key of She Jazz Jam, which will include not only girls and non-binary students in jazz, but also parents, educators, students of all genders, and really anyone who supports our mission of including girls in jazz. And it is a free event, thanks to our fundraising efforts, and it'll be hosted at the University of the Arts again February 17th. So I'm just going to play you a little song, just to lighten up the mood a little bit, little ear break. This is a tune called "Strike Up the Band." I figured that would be a fitting composition. Just this past spring, I was able to be a part of the Monka Jazz Festival, where I played in King of Prussia, thanks to Joanna Pascal's efforts celebrating women in jazz. And I'm so excited to see where the Jazz Festival continues, and I'm excited to be a part of it in this coming year as well. So thank you so much for your time today.
That's awesome. Thanks for being here, and congratulations on graduating, and we'll get that information on that event, so that we can share that more broadly.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you, Olivia. So all of these things, Rev Run, Crave, Arts Jazz, they help us to tell a positive story of Montgomery County in our PR and our social. You can see some of the success that we've had here with the numbers. This year we'll be really focused on analytics as well as engaging with influencers. The other side of public relations, of course, is communicating with the community, and we accomplish that through our town talks, which we began several years ago. We present to Monka 62 municipalities, not all in one year, unfortunately, it takes time, but we update residents and elected officials on how we're already promoting their area and discuss ways that we can work together. So you can see some of the towns that will be So you can see some of the towns that we'll be going to this year. We also think it's incredibly important to give back to our community. So that's why, in addition to Revrun, we made a commitment to host our annual Freedom from Hunger Drives in the spring and fall to benefit 70 free meal providers across the county through the Monaco Anti-Hunger Network. This began as a farewell gift to Post-Princess, when he visited the region and stayed at a seminary in Monaco for the World Meeting of Families in 2015. To date, we've collected the monetary equivalent of more than 200,000 pounds of food. Sadly, there are plenty of people who are food insecure in Montgomery County, and I feel like not a lot of people know that or talk about it. MONA alone serves more than 20,000 households and almost 65,000 individuals. 2024 marks the 10th anniversary of both our Freedom from Hunger Food Drive as well as MONA. I'm so proud to serve on the MONA Board of Directors, and Commissioner, I truly appreciate your comments earlier and all of the Commissioners' consideration on that vote today. This is a cause that is close to my heart, so really just appreciate that commitment from this group to this organization. It's really important. We want to raise $10,000 this year for the 10th. Food is a basic human right that everyone deserves, and I think if we all just bring a little bit more to the table, there will be plenty to go around. So really appreciate the effort to help fight hunger together. Last but of course, not least, we'll be celebrating Black History Month all February long by spotlighting our Black-owned businesses with influencers on social. I would also encourage folks, if you haven't already, please check out the inspiring Patriots of African Descent Monument in Valley Forge Park and the moving Charles Bloxton Black History Exhibit, which is at Center Theater right here in Narstown. There's also an Arts Monaco wall at that location, which specifically features work from Black artists. With that, we also have some upcoming events to mark your calendars, including our Travel Rally and Monaco Golf Classic, which will be at Manufacturers Golf and Country Club in Upper Dublin, and then our signature annual lunch event in October at the Greater Philadelphia Expo Center. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions, but I'll turn it back over to our boss.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I know it seemed a little long. We tried to compress it, and sorry about the videos, some technical challenges. Any questions for me? It's great to be here again.
No questions for me. I'm really impressed with the work that you and your team are doing to put a spotlight on Montgomery County, and this is, you know, the arts, the culture, you know, the food scene, you know, raising a family here in Montgomery County. You know, I no longer have to go to the city to do, you know, the family-friendly activities and go out to dinner with my husband. So really impressed with the work that you're doing. So thank you for being here. Any other comments or questions?
That was a great presentation, and I appreciate all the hard work that you're going, that's going on to promote Montgomery County. Two things, one is we had lunch, we had music. I didn't notice any cocktails.
Fireworks.
But you raised an interesting point earlier, probably closer to the beginning of the presentation, and I've noticed that as well over the years. Pennsylvania, in general, hasn't done a very good job of promoting this state. And have you, do you see that as a detriment to all your efforts? Do you, or do you see if Pennsylvania actually did a little better job of promoting this state that would enhance what you're doing? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of impact that...
Great question. And yes, you know, another month or so, you're going to see a lot of commercials from Virginia, from New York, from New Jersey, from Delaware, even New Hampshire. The state has just destroyed its budget over the years. The governor is very much in favor of tourism. We worked very close with Josh over the years when he was the chair, of course, and he gets a lot of jobs associated with tourism. We're hoping in the next budget, there's going to be more money allotted to Pennsylvania. I might be biased, or I don't have a big ego, right? I don't have a big ego. We're the best. We're the best for tri-state region. We're the best in the state. The biggest compliment that we get, Tom, is we see you everywhere. So when Grace Harper's up the bag, you'll see Come to Monaco behind Grace Harper. If you're down the shore in the summer, Kate Mayle at the Long Beach Island, you're going to see airplanes, and so you're missing all the fun in Monaco. And our goal is an awareness campaign, that you come to our website. Justine and her team are incredible. Go to our website, it's phenomenal. But we're out there constantly promoting the county, where the state should be doing more, and it's a great point you bring up. We are here in summer, although there'll be more money in the state, we're hoping, but we push it hard.
I'm not sure if it's a money issue, or, because there is a whole committee at the state level towards...
Well, there is. I agree with them.
Yeah. So I'm just, you know...
I think their budget is, I want to say, four or five million dollars. I think New York's, we're not New York, Pennsylvania, is 300 million, 400 million.
Well, but, I mean, you presented a lot of liveliness and all that, and when you look at, when you look, I'm just, you know, maybe I'm biased because Montgomery County, you guys do a great job. I agree that you probably are the best, or are, maybe bigger than tri-count, but anyway, or tri-state. But it seems like what Pennsylvania is doing currently is just tired. It's tired, and it's dated, and it's old.
I agree.
And we, and maybe, I guess I'm raising this up is because if we could help encourage to, you know, and anything that we can do to help encourage to maybe, you know, incorporate some of your ideas, some of the things that you successfully have been doing, because I think that there's so many opportunities, there's so many things that Pennsylvania as a state, you know, that we want to be able to demonstrate or show, bring people in. We just, we are missing the mark, but it's good that from Montgomery County, you guys are extremely successful. So I appreciate that, and I also love to shout out the Springfield School District multiple times that I heard earlier.
We do a lot with education.
Yeah. I was on the school board in Springfield, I was just kidding around. But no, this has been great, so thank you.
Again, thank you, and we'll be back up. We'll be meeting with Commissioners individually and groups and updating the community. Rachel does a great job with her team, going to all the public meetings, you know, all the towns and townships. More to come.
And I just, one quick other question, sorry. I mean, all these events, I mean, we get notified, because I want to, I mean, we want to make sure that we're there to support anything that we can do as well. I know that, I know that both...
Commissioner Winder and I were talking about it the other day. All of our feeds, all of our social media are out there, we feed the county with everything, but we probably could do a better job of really pushing it to the county to ensure that things are really, and then you're pushing things out.
Right.
It goes so far when the Commissioners are out there.
Right.
With our pile on and being Revrun and various events, and especially dining, it really, because then people are pushing that out on social media and pushing it out, as you know. So...
Yeah, I mean, I know that we would love to be, anything that you have going on, we'd love to be there to help support that. And unfortunately, I can't make that run at the park. When is it?
Boy, I guess you're not coming. I already told them I'm not running.
But no, thank you.
Thank you. It's great, great comments.
Yeah, I'll just say, I had a great time visiting you in the office and meeting the staff this week, and I look forward to following up on many of the things that we talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys, for being here.
Have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Monty. See you later.
Did Monty see a show?
All right, we're going to, what?
Monty does drink...
Do you want to get a photo?
Get a photo.
Monty, if you want to come around here quick for a photo, we'll just like close it out.
Get a show. Can we get a photo of Monty?
Just let him work the crowd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You won't get tackled. All right.
Great job.
Thanks again. All right, we need to move our meeting along here. I'm kicking off our Black History Month event, so don't want to be late to that. So I want to, we're going to jump into public comment, but before we do, I want to turn it over to Ray to review public comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Winder. As Chair Winder announced at the beginning of the meeting, our public comment section is enhanced today, moving forward. This first public comment period that is happening now is for comment on agenda items only. If you have public comment on general county business, that's germane to county business, that would come later in the meeting. At the end of the meeting, there's a second public comment period. And then also, if you're here to talk about the ordinance, that's going to be voted on, we will have a special public comment period during the hearing, which will happen in just a couple minutes for that. So if you're here to talk about that, wait until the hearing for that public comment.
Great. Thank you.
So first up for public comment is Michelle Maure.
Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
Michelle Maure, with the convention. I just want to say, congratulations to the three of you on your win. It's so great to see shining happy pieces up there that are eager to get work done. But that being said, I'm here because I'm going to address the crime in Montgomery County. I moved out...
I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you want to talk about crime, again, that's not an agenda item, that would be at the later part of the meeting.
I felt that was on paper. That's what she said. I was like, I don't know if I'm going to be up there yet.
That's all right. We'll bring it back up later, okay?
Till the end, okay? Put on my waiting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So then we have two public comments on Zoom. The first would be Marlene Lasca.
I don't believe we need a, we have two different comment areas.
Comments.
Comments.
Public comments. We, but I, I'm going to reserve mine to the general comment.
All right, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, so then next would be Deb Spence.
Who was next?
Who was next?
Deb Spence.
Deb Spence. I'll pause someone, too.
Hello, hello?
Yes, hi, go ahead.
Yes, hi, go ahead.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the audio.
Hold on a second. All right.
Can you, can you?
We can hear you. There's just an echo in the room that we're trying to pick up.
You said, you said, you can hear me? Okay, okay, well, even though I can hear my... Weird, weird, but...
Hey, Deb, hold on a second.
My public comment is to congratulate... Miss Winder, Black History Month. It's a celebration. It's sort of like the...
Birthday. Mute her for a second until we get this right.
Depending on who you speak to. Million Blacks. Or one billion.
Colin, if you could send a message to... I just want to talk.
Okay, it shouldn't...
Okay, that sounds better.
Well, I don't know.
So Deb, I think that comment was a general, more of a general public comment, from what I could gather. I don't know if it was, okay. All right, so let's save it for the end. Deb, if you could stick around? All right, anyone else?
No, that is it for public comment.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes from the January 25th, 2024, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 2025, oh, January 25th, 2024, minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mckeja. Any board comment? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to call our special hearing for the Active Volunteer Real Estate Tax Rebate Ordinance Hearing. This hearing is regarding a proposed ordinance to provide a tax rebate for volunteer members of fire companies and emergency medical service agencies. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Commissioners will vote on ordinance 2024-1. During the hearing, the public will be permitted to offer comment on the proposed ordinance, but first, I'd like to invite Maureen, who's already there, to explain and give background on the ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioners. In 2016, Pennsylvania had 172 established the option for municipalities to offer volunteers of fire companies and nonprofit emergency medical services agencies over government real estate tax credit. In 2020, that was expanded to include counties and school districts, and it also established statewide reporting requirements. Subsequently, the amount of the credit was increased from 20% of government tax liability to 100%. Sorry.
It's okay.
And as you had indicated, there are some requirements by the Act before we ask the new ordinance and ordinance to the hearing, we're now voting, and the opportunity to allow the public to comment on the ordinance. Following the adoption of the ordinance, the county is required to send a copy to the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner. Our CFO, Dean, will develop public procedures necessary to implement and implement the active volunteer real estate tax rebate program within 60 days of the passing of the ordinance. And once the, once you approve the ordinance, we will continue to implement the program. And before I ask Dean to explain the actual program, just for the purposes of the record, we want to have a court-keeper take down transcript of this hearing, and I'm going to offer two exhibits to be attached to the hearing, transcript, and one is proof that we advertised the hearing as required by the Act, and the second is the actual copy of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And I was here to describe, actually, the program. They...
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to... The... The ordinance is pretty common, yes, depending on what it's meant, or whatever it requires, but I'm going to set it at a high level. So first, the program itself. Montgomery County Active Volunteer Real Estate Tax Rebate Program allows active volunteer firefighters and nonprofit emergency medical service providers to qualify for accounting with real estate tax rebate up to 100% of the tax amount. Who qualifies? The active members of a fire company or a nonprofit emergency medical service agency volunteering for an elderly entity located here in Montgomery County. The volunteer must be a homeowner or residential property located in Montgomery County, and it must be current with the county real estate tax bills and assessments. So before I talk about some of the details of the program, this is a chart that we typically present on our budget, and I thought it'd be helpful just to outline the impact of the program and real estate taxes that are paid by single-family dwelling owners. So you can see, highlighted in the yellow, the average single-family dwelling in Montgomery County has a market value of 481,000. They pay approximately $818 of real estate tax annually towards the county operations. If you look at the column, the first column that shows property market value, you can see that between 200,000 and up to 800,000 in market value represents about 85% of the overall county single-family residents. Next slide, please. So the primary goal of the program is to encourage membership and service in the county's volunteer fire companies and EMS agencies. The number of volunteer firefighters in Pennsylvania is currently estimated at 30,000. Back in 1970s, you can see that number was 360,000, according to stats provided by the state. So volunteer fire companies throughout Pennsylvania are challenged with recruitment and retention and financing to... So volunteer fire companies throughout Pennsylvania are challenged with recruitment and retention, um, and financing too. I mean, obviously, um, the funding of a volunteer fire company, um, comes from various sources, um, and, you know, the expenses that go with it, with apparatus, uh, training, equipment, um, uh, it, it puts a lot of pressure on a nonprofit agency. Montgomery County has about a hundred and one volunteer fire and EMS agencies servicing, uh, four hundred and eighty-three square miles, uh, with approximately three thousand total firefighters and EMS volunteers. In twenty twenty-three, these agencies responded to just over a hundred and thirteen thousand emergency calls in the county. Next slide, please. The county's proposed program has been developed based on the program guidance that's, uh, been provided by the Pennsylvania Fire Commission's office, and it fully complies with Pennsylvania's Acts, uh, Act one seventy-two and ninety-one. Eligible volunteers warrant a tax credit based on an established criteria and point system that's outlined in the ordinance in front of you. Volunteers have to earn a minimum of fifty points, up to two hundred points annually to be eligible for a real estate tax rebate. The agency supervisor is required to post an authorized list of volunteers and detailed points earned by January third to first following a completed calendar year of service. Next slide, please. The procedure required to keep detailed records of the points earned for a period of three years that's subject to audit by the county controllers' office. Our initial program period will be the calendar year twenty twenty-four, so it'll be between January first and, and the end of the year. Upon completion of this calendar year, volunteers, uh, must submit a county application, um, for the refund program. It requires review and approval first by the agency supervisor, and then submission to the county chief financial officer for review and approval before a real estate tax rebate will be provided. Next slide, please. So just to sum things up, uh, the program point system, which is outlined in the ordinance, and this is just high level, there's approximately six categories that volunteers can earn points in, um, and you can see the ones to responsible, that's direct, uh, response to, to a fire or an emergency. Uh, training, meetings, fire prevention, and public education, leadership roles, and other activities. The specific actions are outlined in the ordinance, um, and then the point system as well, which can be any, anywhere between one point up to ten points. Just to show you what the estimated real estate tax, uh, rebate could be for a volunteer qualifying with various, uh, levels of points achieved, based on the average single-family dwelling, as I mentioned earlier, pays approximately eight hundred and eighteen dollars of real estate tax annually. You can see at the minimum, uh, if they were to achieve fifty points, they would receive a twenty-five percent rebate, approximately two hundred dollars. And then the scale goes up to a total of a hundred percent if you earn two hundred points. So that pretty much covers, um, what's in the ordinance at a high level and how the program would be implemented.
Thank you for, for your work, um, and Maureen for helping to put everything together. So we, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, first up is Andrew Rathfond.
Okay.
Andrew what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last name.
Rathfond, R-A-T-H-F-O-N.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Andrew Rathfond. I am the chief of the Fort Washington Fire Company and all volunteer fire department in Upper Maryland Township. Thank you for inviting us here today. In twenty eighteen, the Pennsylvania Legislature sponsored a committee to research reduced membership in volunteer fire EMS agencies across the state. The famed SR six report, which was produced by the committee, stated, according to the Pennsylvania Fire Emergency Services Institute, the number of volunteer firefighters in Pennsylvania has shrunk from three hundred thousand in the nineteen seventies to about sixty thousand in the early two thousands, and to thirty-eight thousand in twenty eighteen. Montgomery County is not immune from this phenomenon, as nearly every municipality has experienced the same reduced volunteerism. In June twenty eighteen, uh, the Fire Services Study Detailed Report conducted by VFIS on behalf of Montgomery County acknowledged a staffing crisis in the volunteer combination fire rescue EMS system. One of the recommended corrective actions made by VFIS was to establish a tax relief incentive to help recruit, retain, and hold members accountable to professional standards. Commissioners, by adopting this proposed ordinance, you will be taking a proactive step in reversing the volunteerism trend. As a result, this initiative will keep fire suppression in our community both cost-effective and sustainable. I'll end with this, if, if you're wondering if this ordinance will have the intended effect, which is turned by company, Upper Maryland Township Commissioners just voted in December to adopt their own local rebate on municipal taxes. Already in the first month of twenty twenty-four, I've seen better attendance at drills, meetings, and calls. We appreciate your continued support, and thank you for the time and consideration to this generous ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Up next is Blaine Lace.
Good morning, commissioners. I don't have food, music, just to tell the volunteers are out there doing a good job. My name is Blaine Lace. I'm the volunteer fire chief of Plallow Fire Company, which is in Lower Marion Township. For my career, I'm a public safety official for Upper Marion Township, so I represent two municipalities that are in favor, excuse me, in favor of this. In Lower Marion, we have seven volunteer fire companies, uh, so, and, uh, Norbert Ambulance, which is our EMS service, so we would all benefit from this. It is no secret, as my colleague just stated, that the volunteer fire EMS service has been on the decline for many years. This is a problem that started well before any of us started, uh, maybe even before a few were alive even. And we've been working aggressively to try to fix that with, uh, swag, as I heard earlier, t-shirts, and license plates, and hats, and parking permit programs, uh, to entice the volunteers to volunteer. While those things are all needed for company pride and, uh, the leadership, getting people motivated to run into burning buildings in the middle of the night, uh, it just really doesn't have enough teeth to keep people coming back, uh, and joining the volunteer fire service, because it's a big commitment. We know that as we move in life and, and get older, things get busier in life, and it's hard to keep people that we've trained and mentored for years active in the volunteer fire service. So, some numbers for the Lower Marion portion of this. In Lower Marion and Norbert, we initiated a municipal-based tax incentive back in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I believe we were one of the very few first ones to do it, and our township commissioners, uh, did vote it in without too much trouble, because they found the value of it. Back then, it was a twenty percent rebate, and, uh, it was nice, still just didn't have the teeth to keep people coming and joining, uh, new in the fire service, if you will. In twenty twenty-two, some of the legislation changed, and they could provide a hundred percent, uh, rebate. Our township jumped on that chance and, uh, provided that a hundred percent rebate to all of our volunteers, who were active and met all the requirements, as, uh, was indicated in the, uh, in the slideshow. We weren't done with that. Uh, we said to them, it's time to now go to the school board, all right? If we're going to promote voluntaris- volunteerism in the fire EMS world, we need to make sure that, that, that whatever the program is, has teeth, and actually is a real benefit to people volunteering their time. So we approached the township school board in Lower Marion, and last year we were awarded a fifteen hundred dollar rebate towards our school taxes in Lower Marion and Norbert. We're not done, all right? Our commissioners are not, are not content with that, and they're going to continue to push until, uh, we get a much larger, sizable rebate through the school board. After that, we approached the county chiefs association and said, uh, it's time to approach the county commissioners, and this is something that we've done for many years. It just never really got anywhere, and I'm, I'm honored and proud to be in this room, not even a year later, when we started this process. So to you guys, thank you very much for listening to us. And like Andy said earlier, does this program work? Yes, it works. In two thousand and eighteen, when we started in Lower Marion, there was twenty-five people eligible for the, for the rebate. We're up to forty-six now, all right? Understanding that Lower Marion is an expensive place to live, and most of our volunteers have trouble living there because of the expensive thing. This literally will bring it together where maybe you could afford a house that, what you would not otherwise be able to. So finally, we believe that if we are fortunate enough to gain your support in this initiative, we believe that it can start the dialogue with those municipalities who don't already have, uh, a, a tax incentive, and allow all of our compadres throughout Montgomery County to maybe open the door and, and provide a better tax incentive for everybody in the county itself. Thank you for your time and consideration in this valuable ordinance, and we'll note down a couple of the volunteer fire and EMS services in Montgomery County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Rob Caro- uh, Carvel, I'm sorry.
Carvalano.
Carvalano. Carvalano.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rob Carvalan. I'm the deputy director of fire programs for the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. I'm also a twenty-year volunteer firefighter in Lower Marion Township, uh, which he pleases. I'm pleased to be here today to speak in support of this ordinance and provide a tax rebate for fire and emergency medical services volunteers. These volunteers are providing an essential public safety service to our communities and save the taxpayers of the county millions of dollars per year. For example, Montgomery County, Maryland, a very geographically and demographically similar county that operates a combination fire department with both career staff and volunteer firefighters, has an annual fire department budget of over two hundred and fifty million dollars. As the previous speakers noted, the volunteer numbers in the Commonwealth have continued to dwindle. We've seen this firsthand at the Montgomery County Fire Academy. In twenty thirteen, we saw one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five individual firefighters come through the fire academy for various training programs. Last year, that number was down to one thousand three hundred and twenty-three, a decline of nearly twenty-five percent in ten years. These challenges to recruiting and retaining volunteer fire and EMS personnel require creative solutions. As Maureen mentioned, the tax credit programs were enabled by legislative action at the Commonwealth in twenty sixteen and expanded to include the school districts and counties in twenty twenty. These programs have been successful in, in encouraging volunteerism in our communities, and I want to thank you all for collaborating with emergency services personnel in developing this ordinance and for your continued support of the volunteer emergency services in Montgomery County. I also encourage everyone that's here and the commissioners to work with our municipalities and school districts to expand these programs into other areas of the county. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you for being here.
That is all for public comment.
Great. All right, so I'll, um, make a motion to, wait, wait, oh, motion to adjourn the active volunteer real estate tax rebate ordinance hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. You didn't sound very confident there.
Second.
Okay, um, any board comments? Uh, moving all to a vote?
I'm sorry, all right.
We're just adjourning the, the.
Right, 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 because I did have a question.
Yep, that's, that's okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for the German, okay. Next up, I'd like to invite our solicitor back up to go over the ordinance for our approval.
Yes, thank you. Well, you, you can, you're not going to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, did you have any questions regarding?
Any questions?
Just, uh, the, you have here on the slide here, the slide, a, upon completion of the calendar year, so, so the volunteers have to apply annually? Or, so is it an extensive application process, or?
Yeah, so, uh, with the first year of implementation, that's how we go. They would earn their points in this calendar year. They reply in January through their own agency first. There's going to be an application that has to be certified and authorized by the agency supervisor, then that will be submitted to the county myself for review and approval, and then the rebate would be issued. There is a timeframe, um, that that will happen between January and February. So the rebate would likely be issued sometime by the end of February, you know, if we got through that process.
So, but the, the, the application process is, it's the same application every year then, that they would have to file?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then a quick question as far as the, I mean, I'm not sure how many, what the actual number is that we're going to see, but are we gave, are we going to be able to turn that around quickly?
Uh, uh, yeah, we will. We'll, we'll make sure we have resources to, to do that and assistance in place now that we have time to prepare for it. You're, you're right. The example of Lower Marion that we just heard, you know, it's roughly twenty-five percent, forty-four, uh, volunteers of their, their force. So, you know, it's hard to estimate what will happen countywide, but thank you to one indication of a municipality that has, you know, seven different agencies.
Right, and then, um, this isn't going to require additional staff for the county to have to hire to administer this, uh?
We only anticipate that, and I think we can figure out the resources and systems and make sure that we can execute that.
And there's, there's been other counties that have implemented this similar program?
Yes.
Did you want to mention that?
I believe in our just surrounding counties, uh, Bucks, Chester, um, also York County, North Hampton County, um, have all enacted similar.
I think Allegheny County, sizable counties in the process of doing this as well.
Great, thank you.
So I have one question. So we had received a comment, uh, from Commissioner in Lower Marion, uh, Dan Bernheim, about how we could consider those in military service, either in the reserves or active duty, and helping, um, them reach the point goals that are required? Can you talk about, uh, if we've added that and how it applies?
Yes, we actually, uh, reached out to Lower Marion and got the, uh, the language that they are using and, uh, to talk, and, uh, got their feedback on the benefit, um, that they have of including that. And, uh, what we've added is that, uh, if someone is in active military or reserve status, uh, they, um, can get credit for each call responded to by their home company and for each home company drill missed, missed. And we were also a- asked to put a limit on that, which we did, uh, of seventy-five points.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to, to get a motion on the table to approve the ordinance as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Uh, any board, board comment? So I would just like to say, uh, first, thank you all for, for your service. I know stepping up, uh, to the call to protect, uh, public safety is, is one that you all don't take lightly, and you keep our neighborhoods and our families safe. And so this is one way that we could give back a small token of, of our appreciation for all the great work that you and your, your, your volunteers do day in and day out to keep our communities safe. So thank you all for being here to represent, uh, the whole, and we're really hopeful that many will take advantage of this, this tax rebate. So thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, um, well, first, I just want to thank the solicitor's team, um, and the office for doing this excellent work. It was really great to see it, um, come into fruition, and I know you had additional meetings and meeting with, um, other leaders, whether it's municipalities or, or firefighters and EMS, um, to make sure it's the best, uh, that it can be. So, um, I'm very proud that today should we pass this, and I expect we will, um, that we will become the largest county to provide a hundred percent county property tax relief, uh, to these critical members, uh, of our community. And again, thank you for keeping us safe and well, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. I was astounded by the number of calls, uh, that are made every day, uh, here in Montgomery County. So I'm very grateful that we're able to take this step, and I also want to thank, uh, Commissioners, uh, Dan Bernheim, who's my commissioner, actually, as well as me being his, he noted, um, who brought, uh, some of the details of this, including the military service provision to our attention, so we could include that. So, uh, thank you all.
I just want to thank all first responders for all their service to the communities. It's unfortunate that, that we see the dwindling, uh, volunteers, and, and hopefully, uh, programs like this will help maintain and actually grow your departments. I mean, it's, it's definitely, uh, we need the people, and hopefully this will help. I also want to recognize, I, I believe, Commissioner Winder, you brought this up in December, I think, right?
Yes.
And I just want to accommodate, uh, commend the staff for taking, you know, this concept. I'm not sure if it was worked on prior to you bringing it up in December or not. I don't know the history.
I think they had talked about it.
They talked about it, but it, it just demonstrates that, uh, that this was brought up early, I guess it was early December and all that. And, you know, we, we quickly, uh, get, when we get sworn in, we quickly saw this as a wonderful opportunity to support our community and take, you know, Commissioner Winder's, uh, ideas or concepts, and we carried it forward very quickly, because I think this is going to be extremely helpful for our community. So I want to thank you, I thank Commissioners, and thank everyone for all their support.
Great, thank you for your comments. All right, so we'll move, uh, on to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we now have, uh, a tax rebate, so thank you. All right. Uh, Maureen, if you could, uh, stay up here to, uh, for the approval of an amendment to the public comment guidelines, and we can just, yeah.
Yes, I believe, uh, we have, uh, reviewed. Yes, I believe we have reviewed the fact that the public has for an opportunity to have increased time in speaking at each meeting. And so this requires a formal action, a formal vote on changing our, our, our guidelines for public comment.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number one as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So next up is Commissioner's appointment to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. I'd like to make a motion that Neil McKeesha be appointed as the Commissioner's representative to the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and to designate Scott France, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as the first alternate to Commissioner McKeesha with Matt Edmond of the County Planning Commission serving as a second alternate. All such appointments serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners, and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment?
Go ahead. I'll just add that I really enjoyed meeting with Planning Commission this week, and look forward to working with Scott and the team on this appointment, and thank you for, the commissioners for supporting this. Thank you.
Great. Moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Commissioner's appointment to the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority. I'd like to make a motion that Thomas DeBello be appointed to the Schuylkill River Passenger, Passenger Rail Authority for a term that begins immediately and expires on January 1st, 2027, serving in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeesha. Any board comment?
I just, I'm really excited to be able to be appointed to this board, and I look forward to providing ongoing updates and representing Montgomery County as well.
Great.
Thanks.
Glad you're on it as well. Alright, moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, I'd like to invite Catherine Halen, our Chief Human Resource Officer, to review our personnel list.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated February 6th, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for your consideration.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 7th, 2024 personnel presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeesha. Any board comment? Hearing none. Moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County as attached in Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to a vote. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, awards of contract. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County as seen on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McKeesha. Any board comment?
Uh, just a couple of quick comments. I know you're in a hurry to get to your.
No, we're okay.
But there's, there's three items under 17, 18, and 19, I guess, that are all part of election services coming up for this year. The one in particular is, is 18. I just want to point out that we're not, this is just a maintenance agreement, and a replacement of any bad batteries and stuff like that. And item 19, but this is election voting system support from the Dominion Corp. Company. Although that there's, I still have a lot of questions related to the whole election process and the election equipment. And I will probably, over the next couple of months, be bringing these questions at an election board meeting or at these meetings. But I, I think it's also important to, to point out on this vote that this is, we're already under contract with the voting equipment, so this is to provide services and hardware updates and everything else. But one particular item that I, I hope that moving forward, and I'm not sure if it exists or not, but under election support, we, we bring in contracted services, somebody to come in from Dominion to be here as, as a consultant, I guess you would call it. One of the things I want to make sure that's in place that isn't in place moving forward is that there's what we'll call operational procedures for that consultant, and what they are, pointing out what they're allowed to do and not allowed to do while here on site, especially around the voting equipment, as well as any type of ballots, you know, any, anything associated to the overall process. They're really here as a consultant to support the equipment. And again, I'm not sure if something like that exists or not, but I want to make sure moving forward that we do have that in place, that we're clearly defining what the responsibilities of that consultant is.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, awards of contracts. Southeast PA Regional Task Force, I'd like to get a motion on the table to approve contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit E, C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment. Who do we have?
Yes, up first we'll have Michelle Mohr.
Great, thank you for waiting.
Michelle Mohr, Whippene Township, take two. Anyway, thanks again for, congratulations. I'm here because I, I grew up in Philadelphia. The neighborhood I grew up in was a great neighborhood. Not so much anymore. Which 19 years ago, I could see the writing on the wall, and I brought my three kids and we moved to Montgomery County. Within the past year, it's been pretty scary, my neighborhood's starting to turn. I live in a good neighborhood, like I said, Whippene Township. Within the last year, there was a shooting at the local bowling alley within a mile of my house. I received 12 text messages that night. Are you and the kids okay? Because, you know, we frequent the place. Just a couple of months ago, the house up the street from me was burglarized. And for me, the most concerning of what's happened in the past few months, around the corner from my house, there's a playground, an 11-year-old boy was, they tried to lure an 11-year-old boy into a car. That terrifies me. Subsequent to that, my daughter, driving the same area, witnessed a man there with his door open, standing by his car, pleasuring himself. We called the police. We called the police. They were unable. She was shocked. She didn't get a, she got to make a model of the car, didn't get a license plate number. He wasn't apprehended, so I'm just asking you, if we could please, please, work on crime. Like, I, I've seen the decline because we've had.
Neighborhood, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to address a lot of this moving forward.
Yeah, I'll just add on to that. Thank you for, for coming to share your experience, and sorry to hear that. I met with the district attorney yesterday, and last meeting, we approved a $2 million allocation to help modernize data in the way that they work, the DA's office works with the police departments, and those kinds of things seem, you know, administrative or backend, but they really help tackle crime overall, and so we're gonna continue to invest in those kinds of things and, and give you updates on that.
Well, we had a jam-packed meeting, but hopefully all the information that the public learned about was, was helpful. So I'd like to announce upcoming meeting date. Our next meeting will be Thursday, February 22nd at 10:00 a.m. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the February 7th, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, let's bring up our controller for salary board.
I'm going to the test.
Alright. Do we have any public comment for salary board?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Alright, like, I'd like to invite Catherine Halen up to review the salary board list.
Good morning, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. It is a three-page document dated February 6th, 2024, with a timestamp of 10:00 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for, and are presented for the salary board's consideration.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the February 7th, 2024 salary board presentation as given by Ms. Catherine Halen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the February 7th, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Hearing none. Move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Not used to the eyes yet. Wow.